January 6, 2022, Webster Planning Board, Special Meeting. Do you want anything more you want to add?
No, I'm all set for now.
All right, so let me recap a little bit. Last time Mr. Edison Che was here, and he bought two lots down in Hillsbury. And he wants to combine them, and he wants to put in a driveway. And last time, he proposed, I don't know if you've seen, have you seen this? Yeah. He proposed driveway is 10 feet off, supposedly 10 feet off the line. I don't know if it is.
I measured it today, it is 10 feet off the line.
Okay, good, thank you for measuring. So, last time he was here, he didn't have, he didn't have a wetland scientist.
Nope.
And, and you're right in the sense that, number one, only you and I had visited the property. And that's a mistake, because I think,
Oh, this should have...
Yeah, it wouldn't be fair to him if we all hadn't looked at it, you know? And number two, we weren't up to date on the regs, you know? So, what we should have done is postponed, in my opinion, we should have postponed it until we had a chance to visit it, update the regs. Howdy.
Hey, good afternoon, folks.
Good afternoon, pull up a chair.
Glad you're here.
I guess I can sit beside Paul, huh?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep.
You don't mind?
Back me up.
So, and I was really sorry that you weren't here to, last meeting to...
Well, my intention is we're to be here, but sometimes family comes first.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I get that. And I knew you wanted to postpone it to, make them go to the DES for a permit. So, anyway, we approved it on a vote of...
Yeah, I abstained.
She abstained, I voted against it, and you two voted. So, it was two to one, the vote. And now, we have, we have 30 days that we can, by law, we can review that decision. And so, that's why we're here tonight, to review what we did a month ago. Now, a month ago, when Mr. Che came in here, he had not had a wetland scientist look at that site. It was, as you all know, it's a pretty wet site.
Yep.
And my...
Has everybody seen the site?
Yes, I walked it with Craig.
We all looked at it. You probably looked at it too, Emmett.
Yeah, Emmett's seen it.
Well, Emmett saw it before, we were talking about it.
Yeah, we've, yeah, I'm familiar with it, yes.
Yeah, did you think it was a pretty wet site? Yeah, so...
It's a lot wetter than I thought it was.
Oh, yeah, it's... So, anyway, in, in, since our last meeting, he's hired a wetland scientist, which is probably what DES would have told him to do anyway. And a wetland scientist came up with a map here. I don't know if you've seen it, has Emmett, you've seen it?
I've got it on my...
No, I haven't seen it, but I saw the flag in that they have put out.
So, we got, I got, I sent a letter to Tyler Davidson, wetland specialist at DES, and I asked him, well, I did two things. I called up Mr. Gilde, which is the wetlands guy.
The scientist guy.
The scientist guy. And I said, "How did you come up with this?" And he said, "Well, there are three criteria. One is vegetation, soils, and I think the third was wildlife, but I'm not sure about the third one." And he said, "On two of those things, that's how he drew his map." And I said, "Okay, fine." So, he offered to go out with me sometime, I don't know when. I was hoping that we'd come this week, but I was a little skeptical. I mean, how you draw a crazy map like that, you know? So, anyway, he did. And he, Mr. Che sent this to Tyler Davidson at DES. And I got a message back this afternoon, which I sent to all of you. And I want to, I want to read this out loud. Have you, have you seen this, Paul?
That the one you sent me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna read it.
I was confused by what it, what it meant.
Yeah, well, we can, let's talk about that. But he said, "Please accept this as my last correspondence on this matter. Until such time, the conditions at the site are associated with proposed change could, were changed substantially enough to warrant new guidance. Please also note that this guidance is based upon the information I have received to date, and I have not been on the site to assess conditions. In general, DES Wetland Permit Notification Registration is required for any activity that proposes to disturb, i.e., excavate, fill, construct a structure, on a jurisdictional area." Now, that's kind of a technical term, jurisdictional area, which is basically a wetland pond, lake, or stream. If an activity does not propose a direct impact on a jurisdictional area, no wetland permit from DES can be required. In other words, if you're not going to impact the wetland, you don't need a permit. "The site sketch provided by Mr. Che showed a wetland boundary delineated by New Hampshire Certified Wetland Scientist and a proposed driveway location. Based on this sketch, I stated the following to Mr. Che," and this is the diagram that we're talking about. "Thank you, Edison. In looking at this sketch, the blue line indicates the boundary of the wetlands as determined by Mr. Gilde. I am interpreting that everything to the right of the blue line is wetland, and the left is upland. If this is correct, then the proposed driveway will continue to extend through the blue lines. This would require a wetland permit from DES. If the proposed driveway could avoid this area entirely, no wetland permit through DES would be required." So, basically saying, you know, if you stay, if you stay off on the left side of this thing, you don't need a permit, is what he's saying. Based on the information, and you see DES, they get these stuff all the time, right? And what they have to do is take the word of a wetland scientist. You know, I don't have the certificate, you don't have the certificate. You gotta take the word of the wetland scientist.
Get that.
"Based on the information provided to this point, the guidance provided is still valid. I have expressed to Mr. Che the wetlands rule, environmental wetland 10, 100-900, found here," and he gives a link to that. "Required that applicant to any project demonstrate the potential impacts that jurisdictional areas have been avoided, and where they can't be avoided, these impacts should be minimized. Techniques that can be used to minimize jurisdictional impact can be found in the Wetlands Base Management Practice Techniques." So, he references a couple PDFs that talk in detail about, about these issues. "In light of these requirements above, please note that if the driveway were to be constructed as depicted on the site sketch, and future development would then require impacting the wetlands, that may not meet the avoidance and minimization requires in rural statute. Essentially, the development of the lot should be planned out ahead of time to avoid minimizing impacts to jurisdictional areas of the greatest possible extent." So, what he's saying is that if you're gonna build a building or anything that impacts that wetland, you're gonna need to go to DES and get a permit.
Beforehand.
Beforehand.
Beforehand, yeah.
But as it's proposed, I think it's okay. Are you reading, are you hearing the same thing?
Yeah. If he stays within that designated area, he doesn't have to have a permit.
Well, that's, that's my reading of that.
I don't know how far he has to be from his driveway, whatever it is turning on he's gonna have into the wetlands. He's got 25 feet, 50 feet, is he got, how far is he gonna be from it?
He can't go into that.
But I measured it, and he's got all of 20 feet.
From the edge of the driveway to the wetlands?
The driveway coming in, then he's gonna have a turnaround from here.
Yeah, I saw that.
That turnaround is at least 10 feet from the boundary line, which is required.
Yep.
And the other side is at least 20 feet from the smallest piece of wetland I could find. Now, it, it, looking at what he said last month, I can probably understand that if he cuts those trees down, that wetlands may go away.
I don't think so.
But I don't think so either.
The right-hand side of it definitely is not gonna, and that, that wetland scientist had his ribbons hanging right tight to the guy's driveway. So, there's no way that guy could...
I think that's there just because of where the trees are. He could have gone the other way and been fine.
Off it, off that wetlands?
Yes.
Moved it up the road?
Yeah. He could have, it's just where the trees fell is why he put his mark over it.
Do you have anything to say, Emmett?
Yeah. It's a natural runoff from that whole hill, in, from the neighbors, it's all downhill. He told me that DES told him that he didn't need a culvert underneath his driveway, that there's often Centennial Drive coming in. But just because DES told him that he didn't need a culvert doesn't mean that Paul and I can't tell him that he needs a culvert. And if you're familiar with putting up the silk fence, you have to keep that silk fence when you work around wetlands, four to six feet in from the wetlands, most of the time in further than that. But you can, if you put the right fence up, get a little bit closer, correct me if I'm wrong. So, if you come in from the wetlands with that ribbon marked, and then come in with your silk fence, I mean, you're talking about it, you're narrowing it up so much, I mean, I...
Then it's gonna be sloped.
Yeah.
And the slope's gonna be running toward that wetlands.
If you build, you build up from Centennial Drive down in there, you're gonna be coming up to the road to that, this three or four-foot drop-off that you're gonna have to fill in, and all that water that's coming down, if he doesn't have a culvert underneath his driveway, it's not gonna affect our road, but it's gonna pool up. It's gonna make a great big dam area there, and it's not gonna have the natural flow anymore.
Last time he was here, he said he was gonna put in a culvert.
Yeah, well, the other day, when he talked to me on the phone, because I was gonna do some work for the gentleman, but I pulled my hat, I pulled my straw out of the hat because I, I don't need to work that bad. I don't want to get involved in that. I know there's a wetland scientist that lives a couple of doors down from where they're there, and I...
Sorry for my tardiness.
That's okay, glad to see you. You okay?
I had surgery yesterday, so...
Enjoy, enjoying the cripples here.
Right.
I don't know, I don't know what you guys are used to, but I had to repair a hole in my coal. Aces. So, I'm gonna prepare to stand if that's okay.
Oh, okay, yeah, I was gonna say, if anybody can see you.
Whatever makes you comfortable.
I'm sorry?
Be comfortable.
Yeah, well, I don't know if I'm gonna get comfortable, but...
So, we were just discussing this, and Tyler Davidson at DES sent a letter this afternoon to me, which I forwarded. And he said, basically, that this is okay. And I think it's what you've talked to him, this...
I'm sorry, my eyes are not as... Yeah, and so what I had said was, in one of the things was, it's actually gonna jog a little bit more to the left. Can I go over there? Can I show you? Okay. Oh, no, no, but you see how this is like pretty straight? It's gonna probably, it's gonna probably come a little bit more this way, just because I want to avoid this. I don't have a pen, sorry. I have a pointer. So, you see this jut out here? This is all wetlands in here. So, to have it come in like, you might want to write on this, right? So, a little bit more like this. That's not really writing on here, but a little bit more like this to avoid that, the wetlands.
Are you gonna have a turnaround there?
So, yeah, and so I had noted that in one of the emails. The, I said it's approximately, because it's kind of a goofy shape, but I noted it approximately about 25 by 25. So, right along...
How are you gonna do that without getting too close to this and without going in?
So, I had marked it all off, I had flagged it all. If you, I don't know if anybody was able to go out there, but I flagged it all, and I, and I measured, so, I'm gonna say ballpark. So, I measured out from the property line on the left-hand side.
Yeah.
I actually did, I think it was 11 feet. Right, to do, to do the 10-foot setback, right? And then what I ended up doing was, based upon that, and being to the left of the wetland, right? So, that area there, I marked it off in a different colored flagging tape, and then I measured that out. And that, that came to approximately like, it's a weird shape. To be honest with you, it's kind of a weird shape. That's why I wrote approximately 25 by 25, just because there's, it's like, I'm not sure what you'd call the shape. But approximately about 25 by 25, in kind of like an oddball square, if you will. So, I am within, I am outside of the 10-foot setback for the left-hand side property. I actually walked it out with the woman, I think her name was Tina, the property owner there, and her, and her husband wasn't able to, just to show her everything that I had done, and it was, it's, there's three colors of flagging tape. I know, I know, it looked crazy from the road, but I was like, there's no other way of doing it without, without it being really kind of specific. I flagged everything that the gentleman had done, Bruce, just to be able to see that shape, so you can just note that, to making sure that where the driveway and the turnaround would be ostensibly is to the left of the wetland, so I'm not encroaching on that at all, 10 and a half, 11 feet away from the property line. So, subsequently, where the driveway would enter and where the turnaround would be, it's approximately 25 feet. In some areas, it might be like 26, another one, it might be like 28, because if anybody had been out there, there's a really beautiful sugar maple.
Yeah.
And so, I didn't want to cut down that sugar maple, right? And so, the idea would be is, if I'm, if I'm, the sugar maple would be back left-hand corner of the turnaround. And so, I can probably go about another six feet deep on the right of the sugar maple, right? Without leaving a safety area of the roots of the sugar maple, otherwise you'd kill it, right? So, again, it's kind of like a funky shape. But I would say, if you put a gun to my head, I'm gonna say, give or take, it's like a 25 by 25. I measured with a tape in what I consider to be a kind of a running average of it, but it's really hard, it's really, it wasn't like, I'd have to take 17 different measurements to tell you the exact square footage of that. And I thought that, you know, if it's approximate, that's kind of close enough.
But your, your orange line on the right-hand side is right on that wetlands flag.
That's, that's right. It's, well, it really was...
But I mean, to take, if you're gonna start building that up, you gotta have, be able to slope that. You go, I mean, you don't, you're gonna be right in that water.
And so...
And there's all the brush right there, so we know that's wetlands.
And there's all the brush over, over there.
Little, all the brush. You walk your right-hand side where that orange line is.
Yeah.
You can see it, and it's wet there.
Oh, no, no, you're 100% right. You're 100%, and so my understanding of the...
So, you're not gonna be able to take and put a lot of fill in there without that...
Pouring in.
You're gonna need some silk fence, that needs to be a certain amount away from it.
Exactly, so what I was gonna, what my plan was, because again, the more I go to the left of the, of the opening of that, I suppose to go, I'm gonna say 90 degrees from the road, if I am, I'll actually go more to the left. I'm actually pretty far then away from the wetlands area. And I don't mean like miles away from it, but I'm, I'll probably about, I'll probably get him a couple of feet. So, the goal would probably be is to build a small retaining wall on the right-hand side, because at that lower level, to the point that I'm talking about, not, because on the right-hand side where the dip comes off the road, I'm, I'm, I'm way away from the wetlands. It's as I get into about 16 feet, give or take, right? On the right-hand side, I would be closest to it. That's why I want to pull away a little bit to the left. And then at that point, I'm only at about ground level, right? So, at the ground level there, I'd only have to build a small retaining wall that's only gonna be about 18 inches high. So, I can just do that with, with timbers and mitigate anything that's gonna pour over. You get what I mean?
So, that road, your driveway's gonna drop right down.
It's gonna drop right down.
It's not gonna come up anyways near close to the...
Well, no, no, well, the, the, when it gets down to, so there's two things. One is, to the area that you're talking about where it's closest to the wetlands, that would almost be down about 16 feet in. That's almost to ground level, to the, whatever you want to call that point. It's, it's the first, I don't know, eight feet from the, from Centennial is the, is the steepest. Eight to 10 feet or something like that.
We have a requirement, you probably read all the driveway...
I did.
It said, "Going onto the highway, you have to have plus or minus 5 degrees." So, you have to go at least a car length, plus or minus 5 degrees. So, you can't just drop it down.
Okay.
That's gonna put it right by the tag, right? The wetlands flag, if you came in off the road, that's where that first wetlands flag is, right, right there.
Which is, again, I think I'm agreeing with you, which is why the first point is I'm going left. If you look at that, if you go to the drawing, as it were, at 90 degrees, you're 1,000% right, which is why I don't want to go 90 degrees. According to your rules, I think we can go as much as 60 degrees. So, if I, if I go to the left, then I think I avoid that.
Well, are you gonna put it...
That's, that's fine, that's not what we're talking about.
Okay.
Your driveway from, from the road...
From the road, yeah, from Centennial, yes.
Has to be plus or mi, plus or minus 5 degrees.
Yep.
So, means you have to have that thing built up quite a bit. Then you're gonna wind up going straight down in again.
So, how, how far out do I have to go?
Approximately a car length.
Car length.
So, about, let's call it, is, what, what do you want to call it, about 18 feet?
18, 20 feet, yeah.
All right, I mean, a sedan is 20 feet. So, you want to call it 20 feet? Okay, so fair enough.
So, it means you're gonna build that up in there to meet that specification.
Right.
And then when you come down after the end of it, you're gonna go down...
I'll, I'll, I'll see whatever it's gonna end up being. I mean, it's, you know, even when I try to measure it all out to be able to see the exact amount of tonnage of gravel that I need, it's, it's one of these unknowns. You know, that, I mean, to fill that all up, you get what I mean? So, my plan is, is just to be able to bring in 10-wheeler, drop it over there, push it in, continue, 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 to see how high we have to be able to go. My guess would be is, just to meet that requirement for the driveway portion, it's, it's gotta be something like 30 to 40 ton.
Well, do you, last time you were here, you said you were gonna put in a culvert in there.
There is gonna be a culvert gonna be there, yes. What I said last time, just for clarification, and what I spoke with Emmett was, I had spoken to a gentleman, Bruce, and he said, "You don't require one there. There's one that doesn't, he just said, you don't require..." Which is why I pointed, I said, "Okay, although it might not be required, it seems to be," because Emmett was like, "It just seems smart to be able to do it." I said, "Okay, I'll put one in." So, the idea of putting one in, and your guidelines were 15 inches, I'm, I'm getting a 15-inch culvert, yes.
Okay, that's good, thanks. The other comment I have is, is if you put a str, any kind of structure in there, it has to be 50 feet from your neighbor's line. So, in other words, any kind of structure here would require a DES permit. You would have to go to DP.
Yeah, and I'm, and that's further down the road, so I'm not gonna agree or disagree.
I just want to make you aware.
Yep, and, and my understanding would be is, if I wanted to put any sort of structure in there, is that through you all, or is that through the Hillsbury Village? I forget what it's called, the Lake District, the...
Oh, Hillsbury? No, you'd have to come to us, to the planning board.
Okay, I just wasn't sure.
And, is there any other comments?
Is there any way you can make that section in the back a little bit smaller, as far as the width is concerned?
So, here, here's the thing, right? The answer is yes, right?
Yep.
But then I'd want to go further back. You get what I'm saying? In other words...
I don't see how you can go further back without wetlands back there.
Well, so, right, so that, that's the, that's the, that's the sort of the give and take, right? I mean, so in my world, it's like, sure, I could. So, then if you said to me hypothetically, right, I really want you to go skinnier, just, just for this conversation.
Yep.
Then I'm cutting down the sugar maple. I, I, I gotta cut it down, because I gotta go further. Otherwise, I mean, depending on what you want me to do, would it be, is it 12 feet? Is it 15 feet? Like, already as it is, it's gonna kind of be an odd shape, give or take, like I said, 25 feet?
Generally, in construction sites, the wetland areas, you're gonna, you're gonna put up fences, flagging or something, and it's gonna be four feet off the line.
At least four to six feet from the, where your wetland science person has the boundary marked out for your wetlands.
Yep.
When you put your silk fence in, you've gotta come in from that. You just can't put it right on, on that boundary. So, that's gonna narrow that up even, even more, and...
May I ask you a question? Anybody who wants to answer. So, what is the rule, I have to, I can't be within four feet?
Well, anybody that's gonna do it, do it and do it right, you want it, you don't, if the wetland's right here, you gotta come in with your silk fence to work on that, so you're not working in the wetlands when you put your silk fence up. So, that's gonna narrow that up, and it might even be in more. I...
I don't know those rules.
It'll look wet behind that sugar maple, to me.
No, behind, behind, so, yes, so what I'm saying is...
There's water behind that sugar maple, so you don't have much room from that sugar maple to that green boundary.
Right, so my, my goal right now would be, is to...
I see what your goal is, you want to build a house up past that sugar maple. Is that your goal?
No, so because, so I spoke, when I was speaking with, there's a possibility to put a house up there and put in a, a leach field and everything like that in the back over there. Quite frankly, I don't want to do that. I already have a house, I already have a condo. Like, I, I don't want, my, this is just to put a camp, just to store crap. What I mean, crap, kayaks and things of that nature there. So, I really don't want to put a house there.
I don't know.
So, can I ask you a question? Let's assume that you had the land.
Yeah, if I had the land, I'd get land like that.
I'm sorry?
I have land like that.
No, but if, but if, if you opted to, in a piece of land that you did have like that, and you wanted to at some point, let's just say hypothetically, I do want to put a house up, and I'm telling you right now, I don't. I don't, what, what would be the big deal? In other words, what's the, what's the, do you not, would you not want a house here? Is that my understanding, that you don't want?
Well, that's not on the table. We're not talking...
Okay, but, but it seems like that's a fear, that if I were gonna do something down the road, it seems to be...
Well, that's because of what the DES said. They said, "Well, it looks fine."
Yep.
"But one should plan ahead in that it..."
Down the road.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like any further development would be possible without...
Without asking for permits. That, that is 100% correct, yes. And my answer was, if I were to die in a year from today, there will be no expectation for a house to go up there. If I were to die five years from now, there is no expectation for me to put a house up there.
All right, so let's take that off the table right now.
Okay, fair enough.
Just talking about the driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, oh, we're only talking about the driveway here. And you got pretty, pretty big constraints here between the setback and the wetlands here. You don't have much room to work with here. Is, have you seen the turnaround out there that he's talking about? You know what?
I've been out there, I walked the site, so I did the measurements from the boundary line to the sides. I didn't take any measurements from the road end. I don't know what that is, but it seems like there's a lot of rocky soil at the bottom of that, where he's gonna have to put his driveway in. So, that's gonna all be excavated out of there, or filled, or whatever needs to be done legally.
Yeah, well, I talked to your wetland scientist, and I asked him, "Do you think he's gonna have to put some fill in there to, you know, because it goes to your point, said, well, you, last time you were here, you said, "You just clean off, clean up that brush, and it'll dry right out."
Like, that's not the case.
Well, no, I knew that I had, so just...
That ain't gonna happen.
I knew that I had to put fill in there.
Yeah, he said he was gonna put fill in.
Yeah, 100% I had to put fill in there, I know. The drop-off is too severe.
Okay, all right. Is there any other discussion?
Russell, you would, you would talk to the, to the wet, I mean, to DES too, right?
I did.
Yeah, and so, what was your interpretation of what he had said?
So, it was basically agreeing that if he stayed within the boundaries that was the wetland scientist had done, it would not require a fill permit. However, he said if there was a culvert, since he couldn't see the other sides of the property, he would have to look at that to see if the culvert would need a permit for the property adjacent to it.
So, what if...
Have that a permission.
What if we, you already have a driveway permit from us, we voted in favor.
No, then it was taken back.
No, it was taken back, because it was an illegal vote.
All right.
You cannot vote the way you guys voted. That has to be rescinded and nullified, what do you want to call it?
All right.
Because it's not a legal vote.
Okay, you wanna...
Make a motion to reconsider.
You wanna make a motion?
I'm not sure if I... I'm not sure if I'm able to, whereas I was at the meeting.
And what don't you know?
However the rules have to be read, that vote that you guys took has to be nullified or rescinded, or however you wanna put it.
Alright, let's make a motion to rescind the previous motion.
Okay.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
I, I know I'm not with the planning board, I mean, while I work with you folks, but I'm not a member of the planning board, but why was it difficult? Explain to me how it was done, I wasn't here, so, so I, I'm familiar with how it were.
Well, I, I, I had to read the video, 'cause I wasn't here either. I, I, I heard the video three, four times before I made up my mind. This board, as a whole, voted to approve his driveway permit. And they can't do that. It has to be approved by a member of the planning board and the road agent, uh, fire chief. 'Cause they have to sign the construction permit, they also have to sign the final permit afterwards. So this board can go back, cannot a vote to approve that driveway, well, because there's so many things that you have to do.
I understand, okay.
Yeah, okay.
I, I, I'm with you now.
There's so many things that have to be looked at before you can approve of a driveway. Like the culvert, the line of sight, um, boundary markers. I mean, the guy could bring, anybody could bring a, a map in. And you, to go by the map, then-
Right.
You have, you have a, a leg to stand on, if, if it's legal.
This map has no scale to it, I mean, we don't know.
Okay, I, I'm following you, thank you for clarifying yourself.
I mean, that, I'm, I'm head up, I'm head up over this, and because, that's the reason why I'm here tonight.
Yeah, well, I'm glad you're here tonight.
No, and, and my understanding was that the original, I, I assume your name is Paul, sir?
Yes.
Okay, was, that it was taken away, so-
It was taken away.
Yeah, he had called me-
At my request.
And I, I was under, that, I was a hundred percent aware of that. You know, when he contacted me, he let me know that very clearly.
Okay, so we don't have to, it's already gone, right? We don't have to make a motion to-
The board made the motion, so you would have to reconsider it.
To make it officially gone, then, boys, you need a motion.
Alright, I, I'll second your motion to, to what? Rescind the previous-
Reconsider.
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 Wrong favor.
Aye.
Alright. Okay, now, what do we wanna do here? Paul?
What, what can we do?
Well, we can give him a permit. I mean, as, as, uh, D E S said, you know, as long as he doesn't go into the wetland and he stays ten feet off the boundary, um, I don't think we can say anything. He's got a, a wet, the thing of it is, D E S takes the word of wetland scientist. I'm not a wetland scientist, you're not a wetland scientist.
We don't have any wetland scientists. You're not a wetland scientist, and you're not a wetland scientist.
So he said-
Two more classes, and we will be.
Done, boy, then do it.
So-
One more hat to wear.
So, uh, Mr. Che is, is, he's crossed his Ts and dotted his Is, as far as I'm, as far as I can see.
Do you have the official report with you?
Uh, well, I think it was, I think I forwarded all that information from Bruce Gilde. I, I, I might have been negligent, and, and, I mean, I just has been like-
I can check my stuff.
Yeah, if you can, I, I, I know that he had sent me over a report. I know I got a hard copy of, I believe that he sent one to me electronically as well. Everything that I had received electronically, I believe I forwarded to you. And a great pain, you might even have extra stuff, I can repeat, 'cause I sent so much.
I'll double check tomorrow.
But yes, I, and that, and I-
We need, we need a, a hard copy of that report.
Okay, so when you mean-
Go along with whatever we're doing.
Sure, and, and I, and my understanding is, as well, uh, is that those reports, whether or not I had forwarded them to Russ or not, I believe were forwarded from Mr. Gilde to Tyler Davidson. So everything that he had seen, his, his feedback was not based upon just conjecture. It was actually based upon him seeing everything. So I'm just letting you know that there was no, there was nothing, uh, uh, askew, you know what I mean?
I have all the emails that you sent to Russ and must-
I, I, and I apologize for all the emails, 'cause there were so many of them, you know?
No problem.
I just wanted to make sure that everything was just transparent.
So what do you wanna do here, Paul? I'm asking you because yeah.
We can approve of what he wants to do, but we cannot, as a board, approve his driveway. That has to be done by a member of the planning board. Now, I've been doing this for the last five years or better.
And I appreciate that.
If the board wants to put somebody else in place, that's up to them.
No, no.
You're doing a fine job.
Yeah, I don't, I don't-
And I'm trying my best to make sure that all these rules that were set forth
Amazing.
by prior planning boards are obeyed.
And I, I, we all appreciate that.
Yeah.
We're not trying to under-
Take the hat right off to you.
We're not trying to undercut you in any way here.
We just thought we were doing the right thing at the time, but evidently, I'm new at this.
Yeah.
I don't know everything.
That's why I say, I caution-
And I'm glad you, you-
I caution the board.
Yeah.
If you're not sure, wait.
Well, we should, that's what we should've done last time, is we, you know, none of us had, in fairness to Mr. Che, we, we all should've looked at the lot. And, but secondly, we weren't up to date with the regs.
Well, they wouldn't have done much good to look at the lot until after all the marquee tapes were out there, so you'll know what you're looking at.
Right.
Well, and then probably be advised to what is missing for approval. 'Cause in my mind, when somebody comes in front of a board to try to do something that they're trying to do, I don't, I, I personally don't like to hold them up. So now that we know, we'll make sure that next time this comes about, um, we'll have the proper paperwork in front of us. 'Cause, you know, as you came in here pretty upset, none of us were doing this to make that happen to you, Paul, but on this flip side of the coin, we have a gentleman that wants to put a driveway in, you know? And, and I look at it as, yes, we wanna fu- but we wanna follow the planning board rules, agreed, but for everybody to memorize every rule there is, I'm sorry, it's probably not gonna happen. We look to Russell to help us and guide us, and he's learning too. So, um, right, Russell, am I saying that right? But with that, with all fairness to Mr., you know, Chin, I also didn't wanna make him see him have to come back and forth, I thought we had what we needed to move forward. So, that's my stance on it.
Yeah, and I made a mistake last time, too. Anyway, I'd like-
I, I think if we're gonna make anything here tonight, we have to put down exactly what we want him to do.
Yeah, I agree with that.
The four feet in for the, for the silk fence.
Let's find out, let's, let, have Russell do that, but I mean, that's different, different contractors do different things, but there must be a, and maybe it can be done right on the, right on the wetlands line that's coming in, which will be it to his favor if it is, but if it needs to be set in four feet, we, when Paul and I okay things-
You can put that right in the construction, there's a, there's a box for it on the permit, you can write in the requirements.
Silk fence required. Well, it's got any, any wetland, any, around any wetland.
'Cause there is a section for notes.
And there's different, and, and there's six different types of silk fence.
Those, uh, just to clarify, since I've ne- I haven't ever heard that term, we're talking about that sort of orange-
Well, some, some's orange, some's black, um, yeah. With the grade stakes every four feet, and the hay bales, and then you have to dig down, um, six or eight inches to, so it doesn't go under it.
Yep, yep.
And hay bales, it all depends on, on that, but, um, that has to be a-
Are those in our regs to what kind of silk fences?
No.
Needed?
Not that I saw.
No, it's not.
No.
That's up to the contractor.
The contractor.
Yeah, that's up to the contractor, you know?
There was also, from my understanding, when I went through the rules and regs, I did not see anything that, that mentioned, and I'm not saying that there's no rule on this, but I didn't see anything that was, whether it was three foot, two foot, one foot, eight foot setback. My understanding is, from Bruce Gilde, is that when he puts a marker down to it, the, the, the standard deviation of errors from his mark is one to two inches. That's, that's what that, that is. So I should be able to go up to that point, again, from his words, to two inches and be within that flag, and I'm fine.
A contractor would know those rules.
Well, every contractor does things differently.
That's right, yeah, that's right. And, and the idea was to, to, I think, to, to, I don't know who mentioned it, but when you put up the silk fence, if you put behind the silk fence, hay.
Hay bales.
It's, it's, that's, that's like, that's basically like a wall, you know, it, it just stops everything that would be there. The only thing would be is, unless somebody can tell me definitively uh, the amount of ton of gravel and things like that that I would need there, which, so the plan that I was, was gonna be doing, which isn't really very scientific, it was just, a ten wheeler shows up, they back it all up, we, we move it forward after putting down the hay bales to be able to create this wall on the right-hand side, again, facing, and then just keep, keep moving the material to get to that grade before you could even get to the turnaround, you know what I mean? Because the drop is too severe, and just keep on going with that material until I, e- either you run out of gravel or I run out of money. But, so I don't-
You know, are you gonna muck that out before you put the gravel in it?
What do you mean?
Uh, get the topsoil off it and s- and stuff.
No, you don't have to. Am I hearing something that is-
No, I mean, I, I just, I'm-
I think he's just trying to give me a little advice.
Well, the thing would be is, underneath that, when we were just trying to move things around, because you can see the undulations all through it, it's, it's stuck between some rocks, some roots, there's just a whole bunch of different things. I don't even know if you wanted to take off, and you're following the, the thought process, to get some of that out?
Well, no, I mean, on a normal, you would take and move an excavator, and then get all the topsoil out of there, the rocks, the stumps, before, and then you, a lot like that, you'd put some fabric down and start putting your gravel on it, so you, I mean, that topsoil, if you're only gonna go that much with that gravel, that stuff's just gonna come right up through that, and you're gonna have mud when you're done.
You're gonna need some rock, crushed rock.
So if you-
But he makes a good point about the fabric, that stuff can really-
Oh, the, the, a barrier like that, a fabric putting it down underneath, it, that's, that's actually a, a pretty good idea. But what I'm saying is, that's, that's a different, putting weed barrier down underneath the gravel is different, a totally different conversation than, than removing all the topsoil. Those, those two things to me are not, are not the same thing. Putting on weed barrier makes a lot of sense, so the gravel just doesn't keep disappearing under the earth.
Right, but I mean, you take the, that topsoil, it's just gonna work its way up through that gravel if you're only gonna go that, you, you're just gonna make mud, but that's up to you, you know? I mean, I guess everybody does it different. Right is right, wrong's wrong.
So do we need the actual plan from a contractor?
No, no.
I don't see any reason for that.
Yeah.
Good.
No, it, it's all in the driveway rigs that you have that, so, so wide, so many inches of gravel.
Yep.
Um, and what, what, what he puts underneath it, if anything, that's, he lives with that at the end of the day.
Right, same the idea, I think, in the, in the bylaws, where like, whether or not you wanna add asphalt or things like that, though it's, it's up to the person, I'm not gonna wanna do that, though.
Yeah.
Asphalt is too hazardous, it's gross.
Okay, so I see two requirements or three requirements here? Silk fence, culvert?
Well, no, I mean, I don't care if they put silk fence up, that's up to whoever. When D E S comes along and the water's running down through there, that doesn't, we, we can't make them, that's right. I don't believe.
Alright, okay.
Right, Paul?
No, the contractor would have to make that, make that decision.
Yeah, that's the contractor, him, I don't believe that. If he just, uh, think of it as-
Contractor's license is, is at, at stake, so he's gonna do it right.
So, okay, so we've got culvert, and we have plus or minus five degrees going onto Centennial Drive. Anything else?
How about your site? I mean, have you guys looked at the site?
Line of sight is fine.
Distance?
Yeah.
Line of sight is fine.
So that's all good?
Yeah.
So, so you're good with that? Well, you kinda gotta be, you got a driveway right across the street, plus a road that- Well, I'm just making sure that's all, yeah, taking-
And, and I might ask Paul or Emmett, if you, if you tell me, if you go back out there at any point, to make sure that I'm within the, the parameters of the five degree, right? Then you can, you can stake it out to let me know-
Yeah, that's not our job.
I'm just, okay, I'm, I'm not, and I'm not suggesting it's your job, what I'm just simply saying is-
Yeah, that's not up to us.
Okay.
So are there any other conditions? No? Can we have this?
So we're gonna get the plan from the wetland scientist?
We have to have the plan, on paper, a hard copy of it to put with whatever we're doing tonight.
And that would be the condition that you would need, otherwise? The condition is to follow our regulations.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
I know I have the pictures you sent and the stuff that your wetland scientist said.
Yeah, I thought it was all, I thought it was all, uh, you know, in, in one-
But it sounded like the D E S guy had reviewed it.
Oh, yeah, no, which is, you can-
So the, so the condition's pretty straightforward.
That's, I'm, I'm completely fine, because I know that he was fully disclosed on it. So when he gave the feedback, it was actually directly to Bruce Gilde, so it wasn't even, it was just so, it was them speaking about all the information that was there, and I think he actually notes all of that in the email that he had seen all this, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not really worried about that at all.
Yeah, D E S is okay with it? I think we should be okay with it.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of choice.
So-
About wait?
No.
Uh, so I'm gonna make a motion? Can we vote? And that is, we grant the permit, the driveway permit to Mr. Che?
No.
No. You don't, you folks don't-
Cannot do that.
Can't do it, you're doing the same thing as you just got. Just did. You did that.
What's, what's the process here?
You guys are fine with the wetlands, and you're all happy with D E S. But now it's up to one member of the planning board- And the road agent. And the road agent and the fire chief to sign the-
The permit application.
The permit of construction. And then whatever we want in that, which is, will be the culvert.
Which is what we write on the right hand.
Right there. And then, when the job is completed, and this gentleman gets ahold of Russell, Paul and I go back out. Sign off. And if everything's done the way it's supposed to be done,
We will sign off.
We will sign off on it, and if something isn't done, then we don't sign off on the driveway. We will sign off on it, and if something isn't done, then we don't sign off on the driveway.
Yeah.
So one more point that you may have to consider, it's in the driveway regs, you'll need three feet of asphalt from the road in.
Three feet of asphalt from the road in?
Yes.
Yeah, you can't just have the, here's the asphalt road, you can't just start gravel right there. You've got to have like an apron of asphalt.
Three feet.
Okay.
That's a requirement for any asphalt road.
I have no issue with that.
Any driveway.
Okay, so I have a question, because...
Asphalt road.
So, so...
Right, asphalt road, right, correct.
I just want to understand this. So if I had hypothetically just put in this driveway and turnaround that dotted all the Is and all the Ts correctly, right? And then these gentlemen came out there, whoever, and said, yep, he did it correct, and all this other stuff, I wouldn't have been in violation of being able to install that from the get-go because I didn't have a permit? Because he's only, it sounds like he's only signing off, or they would only be signing off post, versus I thought that I needed to get a permit to actually just get approved?
You have to.
You do.
Yeah, you have to fill out a permit to...
Oh, that's the part I didn't understand.
There's two permits. There's a permit that we sign to start the construction.
Okay.
And then there's a completion of construction permit at the very end.
Yep, okay.
And that is your permit at the very end. You get a permit to start construction, and then you get the final permit when you're done, and everybody's happy.
Okay.
And then you're good to go. And then if nobody's happy, and...
That's a problem, obviously.
Whatever, then we go out with the excavator and we dig back to our boundary and go from there.
So the first permit, are you all able, are they able to, you all, however you want, able to vote on the first of the two?
No, no, it's Paul and I.
We did it wrong. The first time we were here. We did, we...
Okay. No, I just learned in the last few minutes that there's actually two permits.
No, no, there's a permit to start the project, and then there's a permit to finish it. A completion.
Do you have a copy of the...
Kind of like when you get a building permit?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then you got to follow the rules, and then that dude comes in and says, you've done everything right?
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about.
I understand that.
How's that?
Yeah, no.
That's moral, that's moralist terms.
Sustained, yes.
It's not two permits.
I think...
So there's no vote, I get to just hop in my car and leave, is that about right?
That is correct.
Okay.
And so do we.
All right, I'll close the meeting.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you for...
I already got into trouble with the comments here, really. Yes, feel better.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up.
All right, so we have learned.
Yes, we have.
Do we want to go over the section, so can you...
Can you supply a complete driveway?
Application?
For us?
Rules and regulations to give to the board?
I can.
We all have them.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, we have them in probably that great big thick book.
In the big binder.
You probably do, yes. But, that's why I was saying... Basically, what we generally get is this.
Yeah.
We don't need to know the rest, because we do. This is all the customer, all the person gets, the landowner gets, is this. And we sign it off or whatever. But there are also more rules and regulations that have to be followed that on our...
Yeah, the thing like the depth.
In the depth form.
I remember this from when we did the driveway down on...
Dustin Road.
Dustin, yeah.
Yes, yeah. Now, again, there are rules or regulations as far as a driveway that's longer than 300 feet.
Yep.
If you have a copy of it, I would suggest you make yourselves familiar with it. So maybe this won't come up again, maybe it will.
I think that's a great idea.
Well, that's why I was saying, do we want to go over the process right now, so everybody knows the process? It's written in the regulations. It's just a paragraph.
That's all it is, let's do it up.
Yeah, so... This is in Section B. The driveway permitting process consists of the following three steps, as I folded up. The property owner shall execute and submit for the planning board review the driveway application portion of the driveway application permit approval form available at town office. If this form is executed by the agent or of the owners, the application must include a written authorization for said agent to act on behalf of the owners. The application must include a dimension drawing with sufficient detail to demonstrate compliance with the specifications enumerated in Section 5 below, and may include additional supplementing documents. Part two, if the planning board and the Webster fire chief find the driveway as proposed in the driveway permit application process to be compliant with all relevant requirements, they will sign the driveway construction permit. Section of the form, pending any additional requirements they deem appropriate. A copy of the form thus executed will be provided to the applicant. A, in the case of a driveway insurrection in State Road, issuance of a state driveway permit shall be regarded as compliance with the Webster requirements for the design of the driveway slash seat intersection. Three, following the completion of the driveway construction, the applicant must notify the town office that the work is accomplished and is ready for the planning board inspection. If that inspection confirms that the driveway has been built in accordance with the driveway construction permit, the final driveway approval will be signed, and the property will be provided to the applicant.
So I'm just going to, so I can get this clear in my head, so, you know, we don't get Paul in here as upset as he was. If somebody comes to us, and for some reason you're not here or you haven't been here, we just tell them, we can't even look at them?
Very correct.
Am I missing anything?
That they have to do the application.
I don't follow what you talk about.
Okay, so like what happened, just so that I can learn from it too, because, you know, this, how you're feeling is, by no means, Paul, what we were trying to do. I just look at it, if somebody comes in in front of a board and they have the application filled out, and we do look for guidance, because, you know...
They should not.
That's right.
But he brought, we had that, didn't we have his application? Yeah, we had this application, yes.
Okay.
Yes, with his drawing and all that. Craig was worried about the wetlands, which I get, right? But I said, you know, I looked at it as that, that is DES to be part of that rule. That's not really for us to say. When we looked a little closer, you said, well, probably it is, because what it boils down to is, again, somebody brings in that application, for some reason you guys aren't here or we don't have any notice of that you've reviewed it or anything, we just need to look at that guy and say, we can't even talk to you. That's the way I look at it.
Right, because Paul represents you...
The plan board.
You folks...
Well, I mean, when he reads it, he said, yeah, right.
You can discuss, like we did tonight, his plans, but you cannot approve of his driveway.
Yeah, and I don't even know what the point would be of unless there's something, well, your wetlands point out. But I don't know why you'd discuss it anyways, if it's going to wait on you two to decide what is going to happen.
Yes.
I just, I'm a person that doesn't like to mislead people. And I feel like this is, you know, yes, this regulation's in place, I didn't write them, I realize we have to follow them, but my interpretation of it was, you know, here's what we're, here's what it is, you filled out the application, nowhere did we get that you guys were not in agreeance of it, which, we learned from that.
I didn't get this right from the beginning.
Right, but that's not what was presented to us, Paul, and you were not here, unfortunately, which, again, hey, all of us are going to miss a meeting or two, no question.
A lot of that falls on me, because I didn't follow it.
Well, and now that I look at it...
And you know something, we're all human, and we're all here, nobody lost any fingers.
Right.
No, no, but I don't, I'm not, I'm not doing this to serve people, to be one of those people that make them come back and come back and come back. Because if we can't do it, you can't do it, if you can do it, you can do it.
Right.
That's where I stand.
Yeah.
And looking at his picture that he showed us, I honestly didn't see a problem with what he was doing. I did not go out there, which that's my fault.
Right, but me too.
If I had gone out there, then you would be able to tell, well, here's the wetlands.
But still, we didn't know for sure, but you hold on, we didn't know for sure that, because there's wetlands, you know, rugs and rules that the state provides that people are supposed to follow, okay? I'm not a wetland scientist, I mean, you may almost be, you might be, Paul. I am not, okay? And so for me to sit here, I mean, and Addy's got years of logging experience, I'm not dumb, I've been doing it a long time too, but I'm not, I'm not as savvy as you, but my point is, is who am I to tell him that's a wetlands violation? And you're brighter about it too, but that's the way I feel, unless our regulations say that you can. What scares me is, I'm not a wetland scientist.
Thing of it is, we told him that he needed to go and get a wetlands thing.
And he did.
So we did the right thing as far as that went, I'm all thinking that...
He went, he went and proved.
Yeah, just like what we told him to do.
He paid the guy to come out and flag it out, and I imagine that wasn't cheap, and he did what you have.
It's very colorful, too. Yes, right.
Well, and if we looked carefully at it, it does have both, the planning board signature, which I guess we didn't realize it was one member that was doing it.
Yeah, I didn't know it was just one member.
That's the point I wanted to get across. If a guy brings in a sketch, that sketch doesn't mean anything until you go look at it. I mean, he can say he's 10 feet from the line. Now, he could be five feet from the line, and you guys wouldn't know that.
Yeah.
Paul and I have gone out, and everything was supposed to be marked out, painted out and everything, and we've got down there how many different places? And there was no great stakes, no, and then, but somebody always had an excuse.
See, the first time I looked at that, there wasn't any ribbons.
No.
He just had paint lines on the road, that's all I was going by.
That's one reason why he decided he could bypass the wetlands. And I was against it to make from the beginning, because I know there's water on that property.
Of course it is, absolutely.
We were, Paul and I worked with Pete, the guy that built the house down the street with all that wetlands and driveway and worked all that, and...
So one other thing.
We're not going to be against him, we're just going to make sure we follow the rules.
The state RSA regs, which we have to follow. Section 482, which talks about wetlands, it talks a lot about dredge and fill, and it talks a lot about lakes and docks and shit, which you can ignore, basically. But, and it also delineates the planning board's role in enforcing this stuff. I mean, we have certain powers that we can say, you know, we can say you need to go to DES, for example.
Well, that's what we told him.
And I think ultimately, yeah, that's what we were approving it on.
Yeah.
Or you get into trouble, you get into trouble, and that's not our main, but we need to say it, that's the difference.
I'm not sure that's right. I mean, you can't just throw somebody under the bus, they're going to come back and say, you know, the planning board said that this was...
Well, and that's why you'd want to make it conditional on getting all the proper permits from DES, right?
That is, if you look at our driveway regs, it says, you know, we will grant this provided you have all the permits. So there's some prerequisites.
Yeah, so we weren't wrong.
No, you weren't wrong.
People regularly have to come more than once for a driveway permit, because they have to turn in the form, we have to discuss it and make any conditions.
No.
And you guys have to look at it and make conditions.
We do.
They've got it.
Exactly.
That driveway application should never come in front of the board.
It won't until it's them guys handle it.
I'm, because if we don't, we don't really have a say. They're in charge of what is going.
Emmett and Paul.
This application should never come in front of the board.
Because if I understand it correctly, until they give their approvals, and then we can have an opinion, is that what it...
It goes to Russ, and then Russ notifies Emmett and myself.
And if Paul needs backup with the planning board, or he thinks it's...
Which is what happened in this situation.
If it's a problem, it has to go to the board.
It is.
If it's a problem that we can't solve with this, then we come in front of the board.
Oh, okay. He mean right now or before?
Before.
Oh, so he had requested it to come in front of us, but he just wasn't able to make it?
Yes.
Correct.
Right.
No, I think things went, I mean, nobody did anything wrong.
Other than voting to approve without...
Careful how you say that, Emmett. That's what Paul said, I just want to make sure I know what I'm doing, if I'm wrong.
Let me just give you...
I don't like doing things wrong, like I'm out, but...
I am with you.
Yeah.
Let me just give you a quick scenario on what happened. If that vote had stayed, that gentleman could have gone out and done anything he wanted to that driveway. And we would not have any recourse to say, no, it's not done right.
But if you put it, it would still have to be to the town spec, though, right?
Not the way you guys voted.